Good evening and welcome to the August 9th, 2018 Board of County Commissioners Meeting. This is a special meeting for us. This is a public hearing regarding the 2019 budget. You can watch this online on YouTube. We are also streaming live on Facebook tonight. And this will be recorded and placed on our website, SedgwickCounty.org, and like I said, also on YouTube. If you still would like to make another comment or anything, please feel free to leave us your comments on our website. Once again, www.SedgwickCounty.org, and we have an online forum for the 2019 budget. And with that, Chairman, I will let you start the meeting.
Thank you, Kate. I appreciate it. And I want to welcome all the folks that are joining us here today and those that will be watching this online. We have a number of folks that are signed up to speak tonight. We're going to actually hold two different meetings tonight. One is the Board of County Commissioners Meeting where we're holding a public comment period, and then the board will adjourn that. And we'll have a fire board meeting that we will conduct public comment on that. But we will start with the Board of County Commissioners Meeting. So, a couple of things. We've got a number of folks that are signed up to speak this evening. I'm going to give each one of you three minutes to speak. If you are signed up and someone else has already made your point, we appreciate it if you just let us know that someone else has made your point and what it is rather than repeating the same thing several times. But with that, I'd like to call the meeting to order for August 9th, 2018. Madam Clerk, first item.
Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in us, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Randzow.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
New business. Item A, Public Hearing Regarding the 2019 Sedgwick County Budget.
Thank you. Andrew Scholes.
All right. Good evening. This evening is the final public hearing on the 2019 budget. Sedgwick County's recommended operating budget totals $419,42,893. This budget will be supported with a property tax levy of $142,756,344, which is approximately equivalent to 29.359 mils, based on the estimated assessed valuation and subject to technical adjustments. I recommend you open the public hearing and receive comments and close the public hearing once it's over.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for Sedgwick County's budget for 2019. And we will be receiving public comment. We have 23 people signed up currently. All but two are signed up to speak about senior centers. So, in the interest of the two individuals that aren't talking about senior centers tonight, I'd like to start with those two first. So, number 16 is Brett Albers. If you would go to the podium, state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Brett Albers. I'm with the Sedgwick County Fair Association. And every year, we operate the Sedgwick County Fair out in Cheney, Kansas, in the month of July. We have great attendance to this event, and we offer something for everybody in the family to do. We have facilities and buildings on these grounds, and we have one building in particular that was built in the 1950s. We refer to it as Building Number Two. And it's fallen into a state of disrepair. We've done all we can to keep it together. And at this point, we feel like something needs to be done with it, either rehab or replacement. Our personal opinion is it needs to be replaced. So, we submitted a request to the county commission to ask for some assistance to help us repair that building and get it back into a safe manner. And so, myself and Andy Riggs, who's on our executive board, are here tonight to kind of give you some background on this, answer any questions you might have, and kind of explain the situation. We've been working with some staff. We've had several people look at it. The roof trusses are sagging in to the point that the ridge cap is separating from the roof lines. The walls are deteriorating, the wood. It's a wood structure. It's all deteriorating to the point where it's a "once you start, where do you stop" type thing. What we would like to do is replace it with a steel building of similar size. And due to the fact that we're a largely volunteer-based operation, we do get county money every year, a small amount of county money, and we stretch that as far as we can with a lot of volunteers. We can do parts of this project ourselves. And basically, what we're asking for is for some assistance from the county commission to help us buy materials and such to replace this building and get it back into a safe manner.
Thank you. Do I have any questions from the Commissioners? See none. Thank you for being here tonight. I appreciate it. The next individual is Andy Riggs. You approach the podium. You have three minutes. State your name for the record.
Yes, Commissioners. My name is Andy Riggs. I serve on the executive board of the Sedgwick County Fair Association, which is held in Cheney, as he said in July. I first want to thank Mr. Dennis for coming out and supporting the fair this year. I didn't actually get to see any of you other guys. I don't know if you made it or not. I apologize if you were there and I didn't see you. We try to keep, as Brett said, try to keep this a family-oriented thing for everybody to come out to. We try to keep it low-cost, which means there's free admission. There's anything and pretty much everything you can do on the fairgrounds for free. Go through all the vendors. You know, you don't have to pay anything like state fair. Like I say, we're just looking to try to modify or replace something that was built before we were even born. So, just with that help would be greatly appreciated. And we can do a lot of it, you know, on our own with, like I say, the manpower of either organizing or trying to find more volunteers, because he said, you know, everything's volunteer-based. I'd probably say 98% of it is volunteer-based. So, with that, we'd like your help, and anything you can do would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you again for being here this evening. I don't see any questions at all, but again, we appreciate you coming and speaking to us.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Hey. We're going to go in order, so I think you've each got cards, so you'll know which order you're in. But the first one is Yedder Mortensen. You approach the podium, state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is Yedder Mortensen. I'm a retired RN, and I do a lot of Meals on Wheels, and I like to remind the commission about the importance of that program. I drive about three to four days a week, and I deliver about 30 to 40 meals each day. The people I deliver to are food insecure, they're seniors, and have a lot of medical problems. But by getting this meal, then I'm able to stay at home and not going to a nursing home, which is much more expensive, $7,000-$8,000 a month. So, I think it is very important. And when I come, we have time to visit a little bit, and as a nurse, I always try to check out to make sure that there are medical problems, that there's nothing out of whack. So, if I find problems, I call home base and let them know so they can come up and check it out. So, I just wanted to let you know how important it is for many people here in Wichita. Thank you.
Miss Mortensen, thank you very much for being here, and thanks for what you do for our community. We appreciate it. Next individual is Steen Mortensen.
I'm Steen Mortensen, 7608 McGill. And my wife did speak so eloquently. I want to thank the Commissioner first for taking a difficult task of kind of dividing out the monies we have to all the different things that we need to pay for. I came to Wichita with my wife and was told that this is a wonderful place to be. When I visited the first time, I found out, yes, indeed it is. It's a lot of people who care for each other. There was very little traffic that time. That's a long time ago, but certainly less than in California when I came. So, we decided to be Americans and have been here since. I have practiced medicine for 42 years and went into remission, whatever we call that, of all what I was doing in February. But in the winters through these last number of years, I've had the pleasure of assisting my wife and driving around in snow-filled little streets in southern Wichita and seeing the people and talk to the people who are getting this service from senior services. As a physician, I want to make a special point. My wife hinted at following their illnesses and general health. Now, if you're looking at the economy, what is one of the best things we can do for our citizens is to keep them healthy, because it's cheaper. My wife said they're nursing homes, but hospitals are expensive. Medicine is incredibly inexpensive. So, the better thing we can do, nourishment for them, so that can keep their health going as long as possible, the better off we all are, including myself as getting older. So, I want to emphasize the things that we're fighting right now is that those who don't have a lot of money cannot buy a lot of food because prices are going up. Now, unfortunately, my wife comes home and tells me that also hits the senior services. So, not only is it an important activity we're doing, but it needs to have support because they don't just sit down there. We do the driving, but they have to find the money to buy the food. And if they don't have enough money to buy the food, they don't get the food. So, I appeal to you to continue to support the activities of the senior services, specifically the Meals on Wheels, to keep our seniors healthy and more comfortable, so best we can do for our fellow citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mortensen. We appreciate you being here this evening, and thanks for what you do for our seniors. Next individual is Rita Stevens. State your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Rita Stevens, and I thank you for taking the time to hear what I have to say. And if you'll forgive me for reading it, because I'm not one of those that remembers very well, just telling you. So, I'm going to read it. The Linwood Center has been a place of contact for me and my daughter. My daughter has no transportation to get to the center, and she would have to walk, and I find that not safe for her, even though she lives very close to Linwood Center. And she uses the library very often. And then, I go to the activities to the senior center, and the center is very close to me and saves me on gas since I am not very low, because I am on very low income. I do, I don't like to go to other centers because they are too far for me to go. And I enjoy seeing the children coming out of the center for their care and activity there at the center, Linwood. And I want and hope that the center remains there for a long time. And I see, and I like to see my friends there at the senior center when I go to visit with them. And also, I do my exercises there as well. I have found that I had a condition in my body that I needed to do the exercises, so I attend those exercises three days a week. So, it's a, and it gets me out of the house and goes somewhere. So, I love being able to come to the center, and I appreciate you taking the time. Thank you.
Ms. Stevens, thank you very much for being here this evening. We appreciate it. Next person is Laurel Alkire. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Laurel Alkire. I'm the Executive Director of Senior Services. I was here at the first public hearing to focus on our meals program, but I'm here to talk about our senior centers. And I said, hey, get a few seniors here. And wow, there's a lot of seniors here. Good job, staff. Senior Services do not ask for any increases. We're still under a funding formula for our senior centers. However, I want to support all of the senior centers in our area, and I want to thank you for supporting them. They are an important and integral part of any community in which they exist. Senior centers keep people moving with exercise classes and health and wellness. We're really all about prevention. As much as we can, we want to keep them out of the hospital, as he talked about. That's a very expensive endeavor for the entire community. We keep them learning with lots of educational things, and we keep them connected with other seniors. As you can see, they're, that, I think, is the most important. We are learning more and more about how much isolation affects our physical and our mental health. They say it's as dangerous as smoking 15 cigarettes a day. So, these senior centers, and you're going to hear a lot about how important they are to them, we just appreciate your support and hope that that will continue. I want to just give you a few statistics. Through July of this year, senior services centers have served 2,172 unduplicated seniors. Of those, only 98 were 55 or older, 55 to 59, but 357 were over the age of 85. I'll tell you, I've got some pickleball players in their 80s that can kick my behind, and I'm afraid to play with them. We don't only just do exercise and educational classes. There are things people don't know we do. This year, we provided tax-free tax help with AARP to 928 seniors. We handed out 116 farmer's market vouchers to seniors. And so far, we have counseled 105 seniors for the Medicare counseling. All of my senior centers have to be Medicare-certified. So, I just wanted to share a little bit with you of things you might not know. Again, you're going to hear a lot, and I just want to thank you for your continued support.
Thank you. Rita Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had one question. Your opening statement or near the beginning of your remarks, it says something about you're not requesting an increase on senior services. Can you please clarify what you meant by that?
Well, I know that there are a few centers that moved up. If you're aware, that we're on a funding formula that was created in 2010, and that formula, the funding that we get, there are different levels, is based on the number of people that come into those senior centers and the number of activities in different areas that we provide. It's not just they give you the money and you do what you want. We have to meet those standards, and I think that's very important. So, under the funding formula, if we wanted to move up to the next funding level, we would have to operate at that next level for two years before we came before you and requested additional dollars. My senior centers are not quite above. I think downtown has to serve over 2,000 seniors before we would be able to do that. So, we're not asking for any increases in this program. I just wanted to come and show our support for all the senior centers in our area.
And which senior center do you work out?
We have downtown, Linwood, northeast, and Orchard Park.
And so, for those four, you're saying because of the performance-based funding agreement that's been in place, you haven't met the thresholds to actually navigate?
Exactly, to move up.
But you are aware that other senior centers are making that same, the argument, they are deserving of more funding based on the same formula?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, I am curious, but you do operate a Meals on Wheels on program. I thankfully got to deliver meals with.
Last year.
And that was a great experience, and I loved seeing how that program works. And so, I saw a lot of volunteers. Where do you, are the volunteers part of the senior center? I mean, how do they, how do you find the volunteers to do that work?
We are so fortunate. A lot of our volunteers have been there 10, 20, 30 years. I think once they do it, once you do it and you have the time especially, most of ours are retired because they're the ones who have the time, you get hooked, and they really enjoy that rapport with those clients and those clients. When I, I don't get to get out of my office very often, but when I deliver, they'll say, well, where's Bob? So, Bob's, they say, Bob is fine. He's just on vacation. I'm just, I'm just filling in. And so, they're very, they're very connected to each other, and that's, I think, a real important part. But we're just always out trying to recruit volunteers, and it's not an easy job because everybody's looking for volunteers.
So, just a follow-up question now. I know that when I did my, when I got to go experience this myself, we were actually picking up the meals at a senior center.
Correct. Well, you pick it up downtown. That's our downtown center.
Senior center, right?
Right.
And I saw some of the activities that were going on at that same time. And I know you have a new kitchen somewhere. I've not seen that. Is that salt, is that same location or?
Yes, it is the same location. It's just three times as big as the old one.
Okay. So, just if that senior center wasn't there, then how would you do, how would you deliver those meals?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
So, my question, thank you.
Let's hope that didn't happen.
That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your chance to ask a question.
I appreciate it. Thanks for being here this evening. Thanks for coming the other day. Next individual is Jane Mosteller.
Good evening. My name is Jane Mosteller, and I'm a member of the Linwood. My husband is Fred, and he's a member of the Derby, so we go to both of them. My husband was diagnosed in the 1990s with diabetes. We went to several different doctors' classes on diabetes training, and he did not understand enough to really change his diet or his habits, and he was, his only testing was done in the doctor's office. And I saw an ad in the Linwood paper about a diabetes class, and the instructor assisted him in the importance of better testing, also improved diet. She got us off of pop and instructed us on that orange juice is a medicine, not a luxury drink, not a drink. And these classes were actually awesome. She explained how fiber, fat, and carbs affect the blood sugars. It was several-week class. She strongly recommended a tablespoon of peanut butter at night before you go to bed to help keep your blood sugars stable through the night. And we actually followed her. We took the same class at Derby at the senior center on 21st and a couple of different times at the Linwood Senior Center. And now, this is 2018. I mean, we're talking some 25 years later. This is good, and I thank the senior center for this. My husband's recent A1C was a seven, and the doctors said that is equivalent to an A- and that is awesome. My father-in-law, I love senior center. It's changed our lives. He was able to have, oh, this is stupid. Sorry. He was able to have an apartment in Hayesville and went to the senior center across the low-income apartment and went to the senior center across the way for meals and friendship, and it helped him a lot, especially in his middle years. And I'd been taking a diabetes, pre-diabetes class in Derby, and the Derby senior centers have trouble with my balance. And they actually called me and suggested that I take a class on mobility and balance. And I took that class from them. That helped me tremendously. And even this year, the tax lady, Linwood, said that my taxes had been done wrong. She did amendments for us, and we got back several hundred dollars. So, I thank her for that and on tax refund, which you don't get very often. And dollars invested in the senior centers are educating physically, mentally, emotionally today and also paving the way for the soon-to-be members of our very beneficial elite group. And I want to thank you for every dollar that you put into the seniors, because we all plan to be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mosteller. Appreciate you being here this evening. Next individual is Donna Fisher. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
I am Donna Fisher, and I am one of the Linwood tax ladies. I don't know how much the commission knows about the AARP Foundation's Tax Aid Program, but we operate in seven senior centers in Sedgwick County during the tax season. It is an all-volunteer program. They, there's some, back in Washington, DC, there are a few paid people. Everybody else are volunteers. Most of us are retired volunteers. And it's our purpose to provide low and moderate income, primarily seniors, with free tax preparation. Many of the folks can't afford to pay someone. Some are doing homestead only, and as, you know, that's, the homestead taxes are a way, tax refunds are a way to, for them to help them stay in their homes. And we do a lot of homestead returns for seniors throughout our organization. We partner with the senior centers. We are in 14, in Sedgwick County, in 14 locations. At least half of those are senior centers. In addition to the four Wichita ones under senior services, we're in Derby, Hayesville, La Familia, and Park City are places where we do the taxes as well. And it's a great partnership with the seniors, with the senior centers. We help, you know, it gives us a location to do, set up and do taxes. They help us schedule the people to come, and we are able to help a lot of seniors that can't afford to pay a tax accountant to have their taxes done or to get any refund that's due them. So, we're very conscientious, we're well-trained, but we appreciate and need the senior centers. So, thank you very much for the financial support of the senior centers, and we appreciate the cooperation of the senior centers with the tax aid program.
Ms. Fisher, thank you very much for being here, and thanks for serving. Our next individual is Stan Allen. Please state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello. My name is Stan Allen. About like 13 years ago, I got old enough to go to the senior center, so I did that. And I'll tell you, I have not been disappointed ever since then. I've met a lot of people over there and made renewed acquaintances I've had in the past. I've found them over there, and they have a good activity system going on. There's a pool table. You get to play pool. I'm at Linwood Center, and sometimes we go downtown and play on the good tables. They got a good table down there. But anyway, anyway, we see a lot of dedicated volunteers over there, too. And if you're not careful, well, you'll find yourself volunteering for something. It's always a blessing to do that, be a part of it. And it's just a good thing to sit here tonight and listen to the people comment on what they have to say about it, learning a few things, and that's good. We also have a Bible study over there on a regular basis, and that's a blessing. Every time I get a chance, I like to go see some of that and be there for that. That's about all I have to say, but the senior centers, they're all very important to older folks. When I was young, I didn't think a thing about it. But when I'm old enough for it, it fills a real gap, so to speak, in my life and gives me a place to go. And I really appreciate the library being there, right, right there with it. So handy and so close. And I don't live very far from there, so that's a blessing, too. Thank you very much.
Mr. Allen, thank you very much for being here this evening. Our next individual is Phyllis Allen. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi. My name is Phyllis Allen. I'm very thankful to be here, and I'm honored to be before you to talk about our senior centers. That was my husband before me, and he's the one that got me going there. The senior centers have kept me being active. I have, I've developed a lot of arthritis in my body, and through going to the senior center, it has encouraged me to be a volunteer. I also volunteer two days a week at the Bread of Life Food Ministry without being encouraged by the senior centers to keep active. I think I would be at home in a chair, just growing old and getting stiff. Our senior centers are very important to us seniors. They keep us motivated, they keep us active, they keep us healthy. We develop such a friendship between one another. I love to play cards. I love to play 13-point pitch, 10-point pitch. I also shoot pool, and our senior centers is a good, safe place to go. I'm thankful for it because I wouldn't want my folks just to go off somewhere. Where would you go? And to have it, be secure. I feel secure and safe at my Linwood Senior Center, and I think the rest of the seniors feel safe at their centers. We thank you for the support, and we hope we get further support from our Commissioners. And that's all I've got to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. We appreciate you being here this evening. Next individual is Judith Equano. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Judith Egino, and 39 years ago, I came from Bolivia. And my cancer in my uterus was operated at Wesley Medical Center, something that Bolivian doctors didn't do, didn't want to do. So, that's the number-one thing that kept me alive. I didn't have cancer anywhere else. But a few years later, I got to just find out about the senior center. But first on, it was, it was the Hispanic Senior Center. I'm one of the four co-founders of La Familia. It was founded in 1990. Later on, I was hired to be a teacher. I'm a Spanish teacher at the Linwood Center and dance teacher, French teacher, and also at Edgemore and Orchard. And in addition to that, I'm also a student of Zumba classes. And lately, I'm more social with the seniors at Linwood Center because they are my family. I'm alone, and biologically, my family is overseas in France, also in Bolivia and Miami, Florida. So, the Linwood Center has become my family. And I'm here to show my moral, physical, emotional support to the center. And I'm here to show my moral, physical, emotional support to the center, because that's what I have taken from them, which is good to give and take, you know? And thank you for your support. And I've been at the centers for about 15 years, teaching, and they keep giving me the jobs, because we are including in our centers, teaching Spanish as a second language at different levels. That's what I do, and I love it. So I live in the southeast area of Wichita. My son has grown up here, being a 12-year-old back then, and now he's a 51-year-old opera singer, and I'm appreciative for that. I feel like the Senior Centers have helped me to just become my emotional problems by not having a family, also in the financial way. I mean, they, they are just friends to me. They are more than friends, they really are friends and family. Otherwise, I wouldn't know where to go. The teaching job is wonderful at the centers, and sometimes I only go there for coffee and donuts, but that's the social part to keep me sane, you know? Because it's, like one of the ladies said, it's not good to be alone. Really, I am 73 in four months, I'll be 74, but a big part of these years in Wichita have been the Senior Centers. I'm a widow also, but they are widows, too, some of them, and I see the happiness. I go to the dances, and I appreciate what you do for the centers, and I just love for you to give us a continued support, because many of us benefit from these centers emotionally, physically, and mentally. And thank you so much.
Ms. Kinnon, thank you very much for being here. Next individual is Linda Matthews. Please state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Hello. My name is Linda Matthews. I can speak regarding Linwood Senior Center both as a member and as a former worker. It is with great pride, I call myself a member of Linwood. It is the most, one of the most important and interesting places you can go to as a senior. They offer a wide variety of activities and can interest just about anyone, from the avid reader to the exercise book. You can learn a new craft, attend social gatherings, such as the birthday parties or games ranging from bingo to pinnacle, or just stop in to say hello and see what other friends might be at the center that day. There's never a dull moment at Linwood Senior Center. We thank you for your support of all the four Senior Centers here in Wichita. We also thank you for allowing me to take a few minutes of your time this evening, and we hope you'll help keep us seniors off the street.
Ms. Matthews, thank you very much for being here. We appreciate your sense of humor. Next individual is Elaine Kinder. Ms. Kinder here? Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes. You can pull that down a little bit. There you go.
Okay. Okay, I'm Elaine Kinder, and I'm with the Linwood Senior Center as a volunteer, and just, I go there. I was lucky. My mother was a person who went there.
Long before I knew y'all.
And she would drag me along sometimes, say, "Come on, you gotta hear this lecture, or you gotta see what this is going on." And it was just great. And so I just feel so happy that it's still there, that I could go. And I personally want to thank you all for your past funding of the Senior Centers, and I most sincerely hope that that funding will not only continue, but even expand in the future. And they asked me to talk about why some of the reasons I like the, love the Senior Centers. And this one thing, they offer daily meals. These are the nominal fee. Some of the people that go are going for socializing, but some of the people are there because that's the one meal they get a day. And I think that's really important. And the socializing thing that happens with eating, you know, eating is a real cultural thing in our, in our society. And eating with friends, that's just great for the digestion, and that helps keep us healthy. And speaking of socializing, that's another reason I love our Senior Centers. There are lots and lots of studies, as somebody mentioned, that demonstrate that people that are alone, they end up getting sick, and then they end up going to care homes and hospitals and do all like that, and that's expensive. And so eating together meals, that helps to help socialize people. And that keeps them from just, just keeps all of us from just sitting around, getting gloomy, and then getting sick. And doing the social interactions with, like with dining together and stuff, helps us to get healthy and to stay healthy and strong. And speaking of strong, all the centers, social, some of the Senior Centers have daily exercise programs, including but not limited to weightlifting, yoga, flexibility classes, balance, stretching exercises, and that doesn't even mention about the walking and dancing classes and those kinds of events as well. I'm particularly fond of the lectures that give us so much helpful information. Some of those lectures are like just one hour, but a lot of them go for, you know, several weeks, like of an afternoon for several weeks at a time, and they give amazing information that's very, very helpful, like the lady said about the diabetes, and then other things, heart conditions, and other really awful conditions. And they give us ways to help with that, to take better care of ourselves. There's also other kinds of training, like how to quit being a hoarder, and cooking classes, and healthy reading classes, and all of that. And then there's all the wonderful fun stuff that's already been mentioned. And finally, and maybe most important, the wonderful, wonderful friendships that I've, that people develop there. It's just amazing, and it's also amazing, you can learn things from the classes, but it's amazing what you can learn from the wisdom of all those wonderful, wonderful seniors. Thank you very much for listening, and again, thank you for supporting the Senior Centers. Thank you.
Ms. Kinder, thank you very much for being here this evening. We appreciate it. Next individual is Odine Moore. State your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Odine Moore. I live at 6146 South Lulu. And good evening, Commissioners. We thank you for giving us this opportunity to tell about the Senior Centers. I want to say ditto to everything that's been said. I think they were reading my comments. But one thing about it, you go to the doctor, he says, "Are you exercising? How much are you exercising? How far are you walking? Get into a permanent exercise program." And that's what our Senior Centers do. We can walk a mile, or two miles, or three miles, if you're up to it. We can have Dynabands, we have weights, we have, like they said, they even have arthritis exercises. Then we have the fun exercises, Tai Chi, line dancing, advanced for beginners, whichever you would like. And then I can go back to my doctor, and I can say, "Yes, I'm exercising. I'm walking." And I'm a widow of 30 years, and going out and being with others, if you don't do that, you will die. You have to have the emotional contact, you have to get with other people, and that's better than a medical therapy program. You can pay to go to therapy programs, but you can go to a Senior Center and have that, and it doesn't cost. They also have games, they have birthday parties, they have Mother's Tea, and of course, the men like to play pool. And I just want to say, we appreciate all that you have done for the Senior Centers. And we just hope that you realize how important it is and keep funding us in the future.
Ms. Moore, thank you very much for being here this evening. We appreciate it. Next individual is Lisa Wang. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name's Lisa Wang, from Senior, Linwood Senior. My language not good enough. I come here because I want to the Linwood Senior Center to go, go very well. And I've come to the Senior Center only three months, but I got a very much benefit. For example, the activity, like, um, strong, I'm sorry, muscle strength, made me the sugar, shoulder much, much well before my shoulder can reach, but now very, very well, better. And the game, before I never do the bingo, something, for example, and the dancing, line dancing, made me, um, physical and mental, physical and mental health much better. And they have awful, awful the cook, health cooking, and we know how do I to make the food better for my body. And last month, my daddy passed away in China. I joined, I joined the grateful supper group. They teach us and pray, pray to me, let me, the bad heart, bad heart go feel good. And so I, I joined the Senior Center, open my, open my eyes, my, my sight, and I, I learning a lot of knowledge and English, and I, I find, and I know a lot of very nice ladies and friends. So I want to keep the Senior Center and ask you to continue to support the Senior Center. Thank you, give me the opportunity to promote the friendship. Thank you so much.
Ms. Wang, thank you very much. We appreciate you being here this evening. Next individual is Diane Pope.
My name is Diane Pope, and when I was a child, I was affected by polio, so I struggled with that, and everybody kept saying, "No, you can't do anything," so I had to prove to them that I can do it. But I was still lonely all through grade school, because I wanted a friend, and there was no friends out there. And as I got older and went to work, I was slower than everybody else, so I still didn't have any friends. So once I retired, somebody mentioned the Senior Center, so I went down to Linwood, and I thought, "Okay, I'll just check into it to see what they have to offer." So they explained to me all the activities that they do, and before I left, they said, "Why don't you come and try us out and see, see what we're like?" So I thought, "Okay." So I, I went, and I really love the Senior Center. They have different activities that I can do. There's friendship, there's love that everybody has in their heart, and they give it to everybody around here. And I have love in my heart that I've always wanted for years and years to give to somebody, and here it is at the Senior Center. And I do thank you all for your support, for helping the Senior Centers, and I hope you can continue it. And I want to mention with all the Commissioners that maybe sometime, all of you can take one activity and go and join the Senior Center, just to see what they're like. They have a pumpkin patch that you can go and, and ride a cart and pick your own pumpkin. And at Christmas time, they had the Christmas lights. They have a bus, and everybody gets in the bus, and they had cookies and hot chocolate. And everybody just laughed and just really enjoyed themselves. So I'm hoping maybe one of these times, you all can, can join us, just to see what we're like. So thank you for all your support. Thank you.
Ms. Pope, thank you for being with us this evening. Next speaker is Gary Heath. Mr. Heath, state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Okay. Gary Heath. And I've attended the Linwood Senior Center. I thank you all for always helping to keep us going. And we, I didn't know what a Senior Center was until a couple of years ago. I'd heard, never heard about them at all. And went by the Linwood Center and thought about joining, went in, seen what it was, and so I joined. And I was a little slow of coming, but now I come every day, and there all day long, because the most wonderful people I've ever met in my life goes there. And so the association is wonderful, and I want to thank all of you for always being so good to me. And we're all kind of love each other in the, in the center there, so we get along well. And we ask you to keep us going, and so we can keep strong and keep our relationships, and so our love keeps growing for each other. Thank you.
Mr. Heath, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Sharice Langenberg. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Sure. My name's Sharice Langenberg, and I am the Director of the Linwood Senior Center. And I, I am just so proud for you to know what we do. We don't take people and retire them, we take people and re-fire them. And so that's what we do. We do it every day with the activities that are going on there. We do it every day with the iron sharpening iron and the kinships that happen. And I, in a, in a political climate today, which is very challenging to abide by, I am thrilled that we have such great hearts here, that you can be demonstrated, that we really appreciate your support, and we couldn't do it without you. And these people are full of wisdom. It is my joy to serve them, and it is my honor. And I just, I'm so proud of y'all. And they speak from the heart, and I do, too. And I just want you to know, again, what you do is very hard and very difficult, because you have to make ends meet, and it's a tough thing. And they're also on limited incomes and budgets. And most of our programs, we don't charge for those things. We, people pitch in, and we have a tremendous group of volunteers. And without our volunteers, we couldn't run. That's really the bottom truth. And so we appreciate everybody, from the door greeter to the people that clean up afterwards, and to the men that wear their little aprons when they serve the women tea. But we do want to let you know that 50 years ago, Senior Services was started by a group of churches and individuals that invested their heart and life and knew that seniors need a place to come and be a part of. And that's so important and so integral, that, that we are thankful that it's still going, and we're having a great celebration this year, 50 years, 50 years of amazing work. And so we want to welcome you. If the police officers can dance, we want to, we want you to come dance with us, too. On September 20th, we're having a dance, and it's called Building Momentum. September is National Senior Center Month, and we would love for you to build some momentum with us. On Thursday, I believe, it's September 20th, we're having a dance at our downtown center from 1:00 to 3:00. We'll be paying a variety of music. And so if the police officers have time to dance, we think you ought to as well, so we want to welcome you to that. So anyway, I just want to thank you again for your support, and we ask for your investment in the future. You know, it's really challenging when you have a lot of youth programs and not so many senior programs, just a drop in the bucket. So we think the investment's worth it, and again, thank you again for your great support. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions, if it's okay. Yeah. Thank you. By the way, I really appreciate you taking time to be here today.
Sure.
And from the testimony of all those that have already spoken about Linwood, it sounds like it's a tremendous organization, and say thank you for your service to our community.
Yeah, we just actually helped save the library. Yeah, we just actually helped save the library, Linwood Library. Our people rallied. Good job. That's all I can say.
Well, just wanted to reflect on some funding with yours. I believe you guys are considered a, um, multi-purpose center, not Level 1. You get 57,000 from the county.
Yes, that's correct.
And you're not eligible for any increase right now, but can you talk about your membership? How many members do you have and?
Sure. We do have a paid membership. We, um, have a $25 membership fee. Uh, most of the other centers around like Derby and Hayesville do not. The city also supports them, which we do not have that support. We rent from the city. Um, right now, what we do, or we do have a few scholarships that we make available because Linwood's in a lower income neighborhood, but, um, I would say bright spirited, um, in all ways. Uh, you were asking me a little bit about budget. We are very, uh, right now, we've served as of, I think I gave Stacy information, we served 625 people in the last six months. Of those, we have about half that pay membership fees. So our, we have to serve 250-plus people to receive, uh, the, the 57,000 that you're talking about. The next level is up, is actually, um, I think 1,001. Um, and that is our downtown Senior Center meets that requirement. I used to be the Director of Downtown Senior Center, so I know that budget as well.
Are you the full-time director?
I am.
Okay. And I see here that you do, you know, there's donations of 21,672 planned for next year. Is that the, is that the scholarships you're talking about?
Um, I was going to say, I'm not sure. I need to kind of look at that. Um, that's probably the paid memberships that we're talking about, um, of $25 revenue.
Okay. And you get some money from, from United Way. I see.
We do get some money from.
About 17,000 from participants fundraising and then there's some donations, 21,672. So.
We do. United Way is divided by the four centers.
Okay. Oh, okay. Yeah, I've got that. I think I've got that breakdown here. But by adding all this up, it looks like your 2019 budget, from my understanding, is around just under a hundred thousand dollars. Does that sound about right?
It, it is, yeah.
Okay. And you're paid out of that hundred thousand?
I am.
And where do you, where is, where is the building that you operate in? Is that a Wichita-owned building or?
It is a Wichita-owned building. Orchard Park and Linwood both rent from the city.
So you, you pay a rental?
We pay rent to the city, yes.
Okay.
And that's a lot, a lot of that budget actually. So yes.
And I, I would just like to make a point. Again, I don't know if this is, just I'm reflecting on all the numbers I'm, I'm seeing in front of me.
Sure, I appreciate it.
It looks to me like all of the small towns do provide, for the most part, there's, there's quite a bit of funding from other, uh, from the cities. I mean, even City of Cheneau, Valley Center, Bel Air, all these other, they, they all donate some money to the, to the organizations we call Senior Centers, but.
Yes, they do.
But Wichita, it doesn't do that.
No, it does not.
Commissioner, I can tell you, when the Aging Mill Levy was established.
Can you approach the podium? I don't have you on.
When the Aging Mill Levy was established some years ago, that's when the city quit funding Senior Centers or any, they figured you guys were doing it. They do, I will, I'll give them kudos. They have not increased my rent in probably 12 or 15 years, uh, at both Orchard and Linwood. But they, when the Aging Mill Levy came to be, the city stepped aside. It's been that way ever since.
That's interesting. It's a long time ago now, but I don't know if we have any history on how that shifted.
I'll see if I can find out.
I'm a data guy. I like to see those kinds of things.
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you for your answers. Appreciate, appreciate.
Thanks all for being here this evening.
Thank you again.
Appreciate it. Next individual is Jerry Myers. Please approach the podium. State your name for the record and you have three minutes.
Jerry Myers, Senior Center Director of Mulvane. And I did bring a lot of my people, but I think they're kind of quiet and they didn't want to talk very much. So I appreciate all you guys from Linwood standing up because the same thing happens at our center. So you guys are brave. Good job. Picture it. Wally Smith, an older gentleman, taking meals on wheels, was preparing to take his shower when we delivered his meals. The door was open and we walked in and yelled his name. Put them on the table, he said. I'm going to take a shower. Do you need anything? We asked. Nope, I'm just fine. The next day, the meal deliverers walked into Wally's house and yelled his name. There was no response. They walked in the kitchen and the little bathroom where Wally was going to take his shower, located off the kitchen, revealed that Wally was laying on the floor where he had fallen. And he had hit his head and he was semi-conscious and he had lain there for those 24 hours from when we delivered meals to the next day. My deliverers are wonderful. They called 911 and they rushed him to the hospital. He was dehydrated and had a concussion and, uh, I think he stayed two weeks in the hospital and then was in rehab, but he finally did get to come home. And sometimes, just like everybody else has said, the driver sometimes is the only person that a homebound person sees all day long. Another lady came into the center and told me that someone turned her in, uh, to the motor vehicle department because she wasn't a safe driver. They had taken her license away and she was so upset. She said, I have these pieces of paper, but I don't know how to fill them out. Can you help me? I had never seen anything like that myself, but we did get this all figured out and, uh, she had to go to the doctor. She had tremors. She had to go to the doctor and the doctor had to say it was okay. And, okay, so she got her driver's license back. Another man told me he hated weekends because he didn't have anything to do. All he did was sit in his chair and watch TV and it got pretty boring. Uh, we talked about isolationism. You said, don't repeat. So I'm just going to say, we talked about isolationism, how harmful it is for seniors. Uh, we know that the goal of every senior is to keep seniors safe and independent in their own homes. All senior centers provide educational programs. They provide exercise and health. We do the AARP tax program. I teach the Matter of Balance class. Uh, we do elder abuse, care living. And we had WSU Nursing School come to our center and do diabetic checks and, uh, visited with the people about what kind of things are you doing in, in your life that are really helping you? Education on identity theft, fraud, scams, truly, truly important in this day for seniors. Seniors are our most valuable resources and at the same time, the most vulnerable. Somebody can get to them just like that. My son's a firefighter in Wichita and he asked me if we did hoarding classes. He said, Mom, sometimes when we're called out, we can't even walk through a house. There's not even a path there. And if there was a fire, it would go up really fast. Um, we already talked about it saves, uh, taxpayers about a hundred thousand dollars to keep a senior out of a nursing home. Mulvane partners with everybody in Mulvane. We partner with the school system. Uh, we've had seniors raking leaves. We've had high school seniors, pardon me, raking leaves and washing, washing, I have to, have to discriminate here. Uh, washing windows, they haul off trash and that was for their National Honor Society. Um, middle school kids have painted, uh, on the curb, painted the number of your house on the curb for us. We partner with the Chamber of Commerce, the City of Mulvane and the Mulvane Recreation. Mulvane Recreation gives a lower price for people who want to walk and do exercises. Uh, they have educational class and they do trips for our seniors also. Our center has a lot of volunteers and you can't run a senior center unless you have volunteers. And I saw some of you guys at the RSVP, uh, when they had that big volunteer lunch and you saw how many people were volunteering. We, we cannot do without our volunteers. Uh, I have seniors at my center who knit caps, make lap robes, knit toe socks for the VAs. Uh, they give rides whenever are needed. They deliver meals. I just want to say seniors are well-informed today. They pay their bills on time and they pay their taxes and they get out and vote. They take pride in their community and they are a proud generation. There are more seniors today than ever before and the numbers are just going to keep increasing. At our center, we have a calling list for inclement weather, emergencies, or if someone, just like the other lady said, is gone. Where is so-and-so? He's okay. I just talked to him. Okay? We also hand out commodities. We do API meals and we hand out Panera Bread. Um, and if someone needs help with home repairs, if we can't find anybody, my husband's pretty handy with a hammer and he can change light bulbs and he's, he's installed doors before. In, in the end, seniors are our most valuable resource in any community. They want to be in their homes. They want to remain independent. They are the backbone of every community and they have the experience and the wisdom to pass on to generations, other generations than themselves. More funding would be much appreciated and well-used. The Mulvane Center, for eight years, has held Senior Center Level 2. And if it goes up every two years, that's four years and we've never received any more funding than what we get for Senior Center, Center Level 1. We invite you to come to our center and thank you very much for all you do. Do you have any questions?
I don't see any. Thanks for being here. Next speaker is Dana Walden. Please state your name for the record and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Dana Walden. I'm the Assistant City Administrator for the City of Park City. With me this evening is Daniella Rivas and she is our Director of Finance. So she can answer any questions that you may have as well. First and foremost, we want to say thank you so much for the support that you've given to Park City. It's because of our partnership with you that we have been able to provide and have the privilege of providing services to seniors in Park City. And as you can see this evening, this is very reflective of the seniors that we serve and how important it is to them to have these services. Our center was established in 1984 and it has developed a strong reputation of providing quality services to citizens of Cedric County. We do not limit, of course, to the City of Park City. We serve people outside of that as well. The center has continued to grow in both the attendance and the programming that we offer. And Commissioner Howell, we are one of the senior centers that has moved up to that next threshold and we are requesting the additional funding. Currently, our center is funded and operates under the status of a Senior Center Level 2 while we meet the programming and attendance requirements of a multi-purpose Senior Center Level 1. Some of the, uh, things that we meet, an example would be the Senior Center Level attendance for a Level 2 is 151 to 200. For multi-purpose, it is 201 to 1,000. On an average, the Park City Senior Center has over 700 active members each year. As far as programs and activities, the required activities for the step-up would be to provide 15 baseline programs. Park City provides 28 in 2017. Educational programs is 70. We met that 70 threshold. And special events to move up would be 20 and Park City provided 24 in 2017. The center continues to grow and for 2018, the center is on track to meet or exceed the numbers and the requirements to move up and be classified and funded as a multi-purpose Senior Center Level 1. Therefore, what we're requesting is your consideration of an increase in funding for the 2019 budget in the amount of 22,000. This requested increase would bring the funding from 35,000, which is associated with Senior Center Level 2, to 57,000, which is the funding level associated with a multi-purpose Senior Center Level 1. From 2014 to 2016, the active membership in Park City Senior Center has increased 22%. The budget for Park City, since 2014 to 2019, what we have included in our proposed budget has actually doubled. We had the budget for the Senior Center in 2014, a little over $76,000. And for 2019, we have proposed $153,414. So the city is really wanting to, uh, continue to promote our Senior Center and we are standing behind it. The Senior Center, uh, funding that we receive from Cedric County has been in the line item for the Senior Center Director for the, uh, the salary and benefit package. Our Senior Center Director is a full-time director. The qualifications that she has include a master's degree in aging services, State of Kansas Department for Aging and Disability Services, Adult Care Home Administrator certification. She is Schick certified for Medicare counseling and she's certified in the Balance Program and is an instructor of that. In addition, uh, our Senior Center has really met capacity. We have a 5,000 square foot building and discussions are underway right now for us to either expand that or build a new Senior Center. So we are very committed to this. Our director personally teaches classes and provides a portion of programs and services. She directs the activities of approximately 40 volunteers. It's approximately 250 hours per month. And she schedules and coordinates activities both at the Senior Center and away from the Senior Center with professional services and people within the community. Some of our programs include what you've heard this evening and you can see how important that is. Uh, we deliver meals on wheels from our center to Park City, Bel Air and Valley Center. Uh, nutritious meals are served at the center. We have a volunteer transportation program. The AARP Tax Assistance Program that you heard about, that is out of our center as well. Medicare counseling, once again, our Senior Center Director is Schick certified. We have health maintenance clinics for things such as foot and nail, blood pressure, hearing, all of the things that you've heard this evening as well, and educational and fitness programs. The center, it serves as a hub of information. It provides programs that aim to provide opportunities to increase the health, knowledge and socialization for a population that is sometimes very vulnerable. It helps them to maintain in their homes so that they can age in place. The information referrals that are available are not just to the seniors themselves, but to their family members as well. So the impact of the Senior Center is just very far-reaching. Park City is committed to serving Cedric County seniors and their families. We will continue to reach out to this ever-growing population as all of our baby boomers are continuing to age at a very quick rate. And we look forward to continuing our partnership with Cedric County and we hope to serve our senior citizens.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Ms. Chairman. I just want to say, number one, again, Mr. Walden, thank you for coming out today and I, I wish you not could have spoke before now, but I appreciate you taking some time to clarify some things. I, I think there may be some confusion on, on the times, the timeframe for requesting, um, and, uh, I guess sometimes we go, I guess we go out and we, we, we look at the center and I guess we verify, um, performance measures, that's something that has to happen in the process. And so, uh, I actually had previous information that said that Park City and, and Valley Center would both be, uh, considered for more funding this year, but then I got a, a recent thing from staff that said that they were not. And it shows at the bottom, there's a, a bullet statement that says, and that they would be considered for additional funding in 2020. So I don't know if that's wrong. We need to verify the timeline on this whole thing. So I, I'll be asking staff, I guess, to clarify some of those details. But right now, just to clarify, the number is 35,000 currently. In 2020, you'll be asking for 22,000 more, going from 35 to 57. Question is whether or not that should happen this year or not. That's my only question. So I need to work with staff to verify how we ended up, some conflict between what you understand and what I had earlier understood and what staff is telling me now, so.
And absolutely, we would appreciate clarification of that. And if we are not eligible this year, we will actually be back to ask that for the next funding cycle. So.
Yeah. And it does tell us that that would happen next year, uh, you know, the following year. But, I, you know, I, earlier this year, I was led to believe that, that this was going to happen for fiscal 19, which we're obviously deliberating tonight. So anyways, I want to say there is some, apparently some confusion. I'm going to work through that. I'll, I'll work with staff on that. And so to the extent there was a question, or a comment directed at me, I guess, I'm, I'm the one that was asking the questions about. the one that was asking the questions about this, which is why I think that you may have directed that comment at me.
The reason I directed that comment to you is because earlier, when I was watching the comments, you had asked a question about those senior centers that were moving up to the next.
Very good. I appreciate that. That's good clarification. Again, thank you for coming out to visit with us.
Because we are one that we were under the understanding that we would be eligible. But once again, we very much appreciate the funding that is provided by Sedgwick County. If we're eligible, we would very much appreciate that. And if we're not, we will be back to ask when we are because our program continues to grow.
Once again, thank you so much for your comments.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Rento?
Yeah. Dana, thanks for coming. I was going to ask you, I've asked staff to contact Madison to make sure she understood the process for getting to evaluate and move up. Are you aware, I've been told that that's happening, I'm planning on following up, but have you heard anything?
I do not know. And the reason that I'm here this evening is because Madison is on vacation, but she will be back next week. And I will absolutely be getting with her to see if she has been contacted.
All right, I'll follow up as well, but if there's any questions, let me know. But Tim and Annette understand the need to make sure that's communicated well.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Walden, thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Nancy Anderson. Please state your name for the record and you have three minutes.
I'm Nancy Anderson from the Valley Center Senior Center. And in the light of what she just said about Park City, my question is kind of the same. We are at a level, a senior club, and so we get $5,000 a year for our Senior Center. And three years ago, they said that the funds were not available for the next level. So our city stepped in, our volunteers, and saved our Senior Center. We would have lost it. So my whole thing is that the county needs to work with the cities to help support these senior centers, because you've heard all the good things that they do. But we were told that our next level is $18,000, so we'd go from 5,000 to 18,000. And they said that won't happen until 2020. And we've been doing, for the last two years, we've been doing, trying to earn that next level. So I don't know. We were told that was, the monies were frozen and that we wouldn't achieve that, wouldn't be able to do that. So now in 2020, they tell us if we complete everything which we have, that it should possibly come about. But I don't know if there are guarantees for that or if it's a misunderstanding or what. I talked to someone today in the area on aging and so that was what she explained to me. But up until this point, they told us that everything was frozen. So maybe you can look into that.
Commissioner Rento?
Yeah, I have. The funding was frozen, but there is a process. When you're ready, like I think someone said, you have to be there for two years, then you ask. And then staff goes out and evaluates that and certifies that. And then you're certified to move up. Now, the funding may not be available at that time, but at least you're certified to move up. And I've asked, I see Annette and I and her back there to communicate with Charlene as well about that. And I talked to her a little bit when I visited you the other day. We'll follow up to make sure she understands that process as well. So at least that step is completed, so.
Well, I hope you will consider that the funds will be there when we meet that requirement. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to clarify, so you're getting 5,000 now?
Yes.
And if you move up, you go to 18,000?
Yes.
That's for me. And how long do you think you've been eligible for that? How many years?
Well, we had a part-time person in 20, it's been three years. And we lost that part-time person. And so Charlene came in, our current Director, came in as part-time, six months, well, four months after that. We took over in January and she came in in April, I believe. And so we had kept all the programs going, but did not do any of the paperwork because I was doing it as volunteer and so, you know, it wasn't my job. So the city did hire her part-time. So she should have had all of that, all the requirements, but they told us the funds were frozen.
Did Valley Center, it says, it looks like right now they're planning to give 16, 670 for next year. Do you know, is that something fairly new? Have they been donating? Has the city been funding at that level for a while or do you know?
Well, for three years, they've been paying everything but the 5,000 that we get from the county. So they've been paying for the Director and a building.
I see. All right. Well, this is similar to the previous discussion. Earlier on, I was told that Valley Center was also, should have been considered for more funding this year along with the other four that are on my list here. And then it was taken off later by staff. So I don't, I think there's some confusion as to whether that should be on or not. You know, I'll work with staff to see if I can get to the bottom of that. Thank you again for...
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. We appreciate it. Next speaker is Lawrence Michansky. I hope I said that right? Or close? Please state your name. Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes, sir.
Hello. My name's Lawrence Michansky. Common spelling. And I just want to let you know that I was born and raised in Detroit. I went through two race riots. Of course, everybody knows the decline in Detroit and why it occurred. And it occurred because of lots of mismanagement and government, okay? And I saw the Motor City capital of the world, their management went out and bought buses. Well, people in Detroit don't ride buses. They build cars and they love cars and they do all there is. Now, I've been paying taxes for 55 years. I'm a baby boomer. The baby boomers in the United States are on the increase. You're going to see more and more of them coming, okay? You can't delay this any longer. It's at your doorstep. Next year, there's going to be more. The year after, there's going to be more. There's going to be more the year after that. They all pay their taxes. How many people pay taxes? Okay, how many people are baby boomers? Okay? And how many people vote? Okay? Thank you for the audience participation. I came to Wichita eventually. I left Detroit. I got the out. I saw the writing on the wall. And when I came to Wichita, I said Wichita parallels Detroit 25, 50 years ago. At one time, Detroit had 3 million people in it. That's the population of Kansas. Today, Wichita has more people in it than the city of Detroit, okay? People, if things aren't right, they're going to get out, okay? And when I came here, since I've been here, I paid my county property taxes and my first property taxes I paid was $250 a year. Now I'm paying $2,100 a year, okay? I've invested by my taxes in the senior services that I expect, just like I paid 55 years in the Social Security, and I expect to get my Social Security. It's not an entitlement. It's something I worked for, I invested in. My wife died 15 years ago and there's a lot of elderly men who live alone. My closest relatives are 1,000 miles away. I like to go to the Senior Citizen Center. And besides that, Jerry is my next-door neighbor, so I'm kind of obligated to, you know, buy Girl Scout cookies for my kids and do the things that neighbors do. Anyhow, I'd like to say more, but I've been told I'm over time, so thank you very much. I hope you do the right decisions because you don't want me to come back.
Thanks, sir, for being here today. And believe it or not, I am a baby boomer myself. Next speaker is Andre Sisko. Please state your name for the record and you have three minutes.
Does my three minutes start now or in five minutes after I get started? My name is Andre Sisko and I live at 5015 Jade in Oaklawn, which is in the unincorporated of Sedgwick County. The reason why I ask when my time started is I wanted to thank Commissioner Howell and Senator Peterson for coming out to National Night Out, which was this last Tuesday. We had a wonderful event and I want to thank them for their support. On the subject of seniors, Sedgwick County Department of Aging falls under the supervision of Annette Graham. Her staff worked very hard to come up with the funding standards for senior centers. At this time, Oaklawn Sunview Senior Center receives from Sedgwick County $35,000 a year to operate. The amount of funding is for a Senior Level Two. However, for the past three years, Oaklawn Sunview Senior Center has operated as a multi-purpose Level One. According to the Senior Center funding standards, we should receive roughly $57,000. As a multi-purpose center, we have worked very hard to accomplish the more than 15 baseline activities, the more than 20 special events, the 70 education items, including the ones that were required on the topics. Our attendance level is, we're at 200, over 201. We are supposed to be between 201 and 1,000 as required. The Oaklawn Sunview Center does have a full-time Director and we are open eight hours a day. Our Director has an Associate's Degree in Communications, a Bachelor's in Science and a Master's in Public Administration. We attended our four quarterly senior summit meetings and attended the eight-hour class on hoarding this year. We keep daily logs of activities and submit our reports to the county as required. Our Senior Center also supplies a newsletter which lists community events that are happening throughout the month. These funding standards of a multi-purpose center are not new. When I am asked you as county commissioners toward funding to senior centers that have reached their goals, I'm a simple person who thinks that Sedgwick County is a great place to live. I raise both my children in Oaklawn. We believe in our county commissioners from all districts that understand the needs of the seniors to keep them active and in their homes. Oaklawn Sunview Center offers a lunch program Monday through Friday to help meet the nutritional needs of the seniors. We also offer food commodities distribution to offset the cost of food. We have in-house, in our building, a Department of Children's and Services office to help our local families get help when needed. We all know that there are a number of seniors that are helping to raise their grandchildren and having a DCF office onsite works well for them. Our center offers computers to our local residents. The Oaklawn Improvement District has free faxing and a free public motory as well. At our last, at your last budget meeting, I stated that an effective elected official, you must be... Sorry. Should I keep going or stop?
Finish your thought, please.
Okay. Let's see. As a county commissioner, you give senior centers the much-needed support to help our seniors keep informed and educated on issues of their health and well-being. As a county commissioner, you must advocate for the better public policy and services to improve the quality of our senior citizens. By helping us develop and implement programs at our senior centers, we will help keep them in their homes longer. By using the Senior Center funding requirements, you help us sponsor outreach teams and sponsor creating programs and activities for our seniors of all life walks. When I think of the funding formula, I think of a person that goes to college to better themselves. Each of the requirement is like a class that you have to pass. A Senior Level One would be an Associate's Degree. A Senior Level Two would be a Bachelor's Degree. And a senior multi-purpose center would be a Master's. We have worked hard to achieve our Master's Degree and we would like you to be, award us the Master's Degree funding. I would like to leave you with one thought. When you go to bed at night, are you confident that you have done all you can do to meet the needs of our seniors? Thank you.
Ms. Sisko, thank you very much for being here this evening. Appreciate it. Our next speaker is Kim Landers. State your name for the record and you have three minutes, please.
My name is Kim Landers. I am the Senior Center Director in Hayesville. I come once again to impress upon you the importance of our local senior centers and the positive impacts that they have not only in the lives of seniors themselves, but in the whole community. I realize that you see many people with their hands out asking for money for their division or specific department, and this must be difficult to prioritize the request, knowing that you cannot give everyone what they are asking for. During last year's public hearing, it was suggested that we could acquire additional funds through the nonprofit Chamber of Commerce. I followed up with that suggestion and was surprised to learn that dues to become a member were $1,000 a year. We simply do not have that kind of money to secure additional funding for our center. I know you are aware that some senior centers have been working for years, not only to improve the quality of the programs and the services we offer to the aging community, but also to lend assistance and guidance in the many areas that impact the aging population. We are usually the first point of contact for that senior or their children if they are having issues with Medicare, home healthcare needs and transportation problems, or should they have general questions regarding how to handle a situation that has arisen and they don't know where to turn. For example, several years ago, I was contacted by a lady from Wichita who could not afford to pay for both her health insurance and her medications. She was in tears at the thought of she and her husband becoming homeless. After speaking with her, I was able to make some contacts and get her some short-term help with her medications, which enabled her to go on and pay her health insurance. After looking at her policy, I realized that she had been substantially overpaying for her Medicare insurance. And the following month, she made an appointment with me to discuss the upcoming year's Medicare policy. She was very surprised to learn that she could save $6,000 between her husband and her policy, and once again, she was in tears. But this time, this was tears of joy. We are always trying to find new activities to reach seniors who have not been to our center. Some of the things that we have done this year is to start a monthly cooking class that emphasizes recipes for one to two servings. We have added one new exercise class and will be adding an additional one before the end of the year. We have coffee with cops, and that is well-attended. But our favorite activity is Family Feud, where we have had competition between other local centers, senior centers and ourselves. Each of these activities fills a need for somebody and makes their lives less lonely and gives them a greater sense of fulfillment. In closing, I ask you to consider the impact that additional funding will make in providing additional services, activities and essential assistance that our senior center can deliver before there is a decline in someone's health, making it necessary to seek out community services. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. It's good to see you again, Kim. It was just a week ago Friday that we last chatted. And you might piggyback on some of those other comments. The City of Hayesville has continued to put more and more money into the Senior Center, correct?
Yes, they have. Yes, they have.
They've committed those funds and you are eligible to move up to the next tier?
Yes.
But understanding budgets, you and I talked about maybe just finding supplemental funding year to year, that any amount would help and that you would utilize that and take advantage of any money the county can find.
That's correct. Yes.
Because I really respect what you do down there and you've obviously been performing extremely well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Good to see you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thanks for being here. Our next speaker is Richard Brown.
He stands for engineer. My mother was Josie the Riveter all during World War II, building B-29s. And I've personally paid taxes in this county for over 68 years. As, and the perspective that cropped up, listening to the other folks speaking, is that any help that the county offers to the senior, our seniors and the senior centers might well be considered a dividend on our investment. And further, I think you might have an opportunity to consider the life experience and education of the seniors as an unsolicited asset, instead of just considering us as an obligation. And as an example of the asset, Mr. Dennis might remember, a failed effort to promote a tavern on Wichita State campus, as opposed to the clutter that we ended up with. Further, my membership, my participation at the Lynwood Center offers me an opportunity to follow in the line of my grandfather, Brown, who was a clown for Ringling Brothers and Vernon and Bailey. Laughter is the best medicine. Thank you.
Mr. Brown, thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it.
Can I bank any unused seconds for next round?
That's the last speaker that I have that signed up. Is there anyone in the audience that didn't have an opportunity to sign up that would like to speak, though? I'd like to give them an opportunity. Is there anyone else that hasn't had a chance to speak? Again, thank you all very much for being here this evening. I sincerely appreciate it. I know each of the commissioners appreciates hearing all of the different comments that you had this evening, and we will take them under advisement as we work through our 2019 budget. But with that in mind, I'd like to close the public hearing of comment portion for our 2019 Sedgwick County budget. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent agenda.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, county manager, recommend you approve consent to agenda item. Bravo.
Mr. Ranzau moved to approve. Commissioner Dennis, step second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
President.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
I'd like to adjourn the Board of County Commissioners' meeting for Thursday, August 9th, 2018. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Sedgwick County Special Meeting of the Fire District. But we'll wait just one minute until the public.
One second. I think we need to receive and file the comments from the budget hearing. Is that correct?
Okay, before we...
Do we need to do that?
We do.
Okay. Says, "Receive public comment and close the public hearing," is what it says in my agenda.
You can do whatever you want, Mr. Chairman.
All right. I'll make a motion. We have not adjourned. I'll back up one step. We've not adjourned. Therefore, I'll make a motion that we receive and file public comment.
Second. I'd like to just make a quick comment, if that's okay.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you. Just want to say thank you to all those that came out and testified tonight. It may not have been obvious, anybody's watching the YouTube channel or online, but we had 20 other folks in the overflow room tonight, which was a very good showing. So, altogether, I added them up in this room, and plus what's in the other room. We had about 70 people in attendance. I think their main issue was senior center funding or senior services, and so I want to just make that point clear. I wouldn't make other comments, but since the room is cleared out, I guess I will do that another time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Howell. I see no other comments. We have already passed the consent agenda. Does everybody agree with that? Madam Clerk, do you agree that we have a consent agenda passed? Very good. All right. Then, I'd like to adjourn the Board of County Commissioners' meeting for Thursday.
Wait. Wait. You didn't take the vote. To receive and file.
Oh, I'm sorry. Aye.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Madam Clerk, does anything else have to come before the Board of County Commissioners' meeting? Very good. Then, if everyone's ready, I'd like to adjourn the Board of County Commissioners' meeting for Thursday, August 9th, 2019. Call to order the Special Meeting for Fire District Number 1 for Thursday, August 9th, Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell.
President.
Commissioner Ranzau.
President.
Commissioner Howell.
President.
Commissioner Unruh.
President.
Chairman Dennis.
President. Next item, please.
New business, item A. Public hearing regarding the 2019 Fire District Number 1 budget.
Commissioners, this evening is the final public hearing on the 2019 Fire District 1 budget. It totals $20,487,728. This budget will be supported with a property tax levy of $17,220,37, which will require a mill levy of approximately 18.371 mils, based on the estimated assessed valuation and subject to technical adjustments. I recommend you open the public hearing, receive comments, and close the public hearing once it's over.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Does anyone, at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for the budget for Sedgwick County Fire District Number 1. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on the Fire District Number 1 budget? Anyone in the audience wish to speak on Fire District Number 1 budget? Seeing no one, I'd like to close the public hearing for Fire District Number 1 budget. I'd like to make a motion that we receive and file. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
All right. Does anything else need to come before Fire District Number 1 this evening? Seeing nothing, we are adjourned. There is nothing else to come before the board? We're adjourned for this evening. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and thank you, everyone, for participating.